Get the council some news.
I'm recording.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the city council study session. First agenda item of the evening is our CAFER report as well as our, I'm sorry, our CAFER and our annual audit presentation. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkle is present, as well as representative from Swanhorst and Company to present the 2016 comprehensive annual financial report. Good evening, welcome.
Evening, Mayor, Council.
You are not Director Rinkle?
She's here somewhere. Oh, there she is.
[inaudible]
So, we're here to present the audited 2016 financial report. I've got Wendy Swanhorst with our auditing firm of Swanhorst and Company here. We'll go through a few of the highlights and then open it up for questions that you might have. I don't think anything new from the general fund standpoint, other than information you've already seen through the monthly reports that we give. We, this is a new auditing firm for us this year, so we've got new eyes on things, and we streamlined a few things at their suggestion this year. It's always nice to have new eyes on things and get new ideas.
That's right, welcome. Thanks for coming tonight. Maybe you should introduce yourself and we can return the favor. Thank you for being here tonight.
So, I'm Wendy Swanhorst with Swanhorst and Company. So, like Kevin said, this is the first year we've done the audit for the city. We learned a lot.
Right, thank you.
Pretty impressed with what you guys do.
Need to finish her.
Okay, okay. So, just to tell you quickly, we always give you this management letter, which is our, you know, tells you what it is we did and what we found during the audit process. So, it starts out by telling you that you've got a clean or unmodified opinion, and so that's, that's the main thing that we give you when you come to do the audit. Really, our goal is to tell you that all of these numbers, you know, in this report, which are all prepared by your staff, are all fairly stated in all material respects. And so, that's really what that opinion means. Under the auditing standards, our other responsibilities to you as the governing board is to tell you if we see any weaknesses in your internal controls, things that can cause the numbers to be misstated, or for fraud to occur. Now, just in general, your controls are pretty good. Part of the audit is we have IT auditors that look at your systems, and you've got some older systems. I know that you're working on replacing, but one of the things they identified that's in this letter on page three, if you're looking at that, is, is the cash receding system. And again, because that's such an old system, that was their main recommendations, recommendation that they saw some weaknesses in your controls. And I know that's a system you're talking about replacing, so I think you're well on your way already to fixing that.
Sorry, that was for collections of what?
Just all cash receding.
Yeah.
From everywhere.
Thank you.
You say page three, you're saying CAFER page three, or?
Oh, this letter. I'm just looking at this three-page letter.
I believe that's.
See, probably have a ways to go.
Yeah. Just a few.
So, as far as the reporting goes, one of the things we said in this letter is that we did a, we did a couple prior period adjustments to your financial statements, meaning we changed prior financial statements. I don't happen to think those are huge deals. I think the biggest numbers were related to the pension plan, and you know, that was a new standard you adopted last year. So, anytime there's a new standard like that, that is really significant like that one was, you know, sometimes it takes a little while to adjust to all of that, so, so we did that. But, you know, in general, you guys are like a lot of cities your size in that you don't have a big staff, and you don't have several people working on this document right here. You generally have one, it's him, and he really does a great job, which you probably know. But because of that, you know, we always recommend changes because we're sort of that second eye on the report, so, you know, that's kind of what we did during the process. But all in all, I think the audit went pretty well, especially since it was our first audit, and, you know, it takes us a while to kind of get up to speed, but things look pretty good in general.
Any questions?
Yeah, questions or, I guess, comments from city council? Mayor Protem Gillett.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys coming and doing this. I know that some of us, I've been hoping that new set of eyes, not that the old set was not good, just every now and then it's good to make sure that you're checking the checkers as well. And what I've learned about the CAFER report, it really doesn't say how well we are financially, it says how well we are in our policies and following our own procedures. So, did you find anything showing that we may have a weakness in following any of those procedures, or did you find them strong and no issues at all?
Yeah, I guess the way I look at that is, you know, this document, this is really shows what your financial position is.
Right.
And this is all prepared by your staff. And so, you guys really hire us to tell you that these numbers are fairly stated, and that's, that's our job, like I said. And then, as far as those internal controls go, if we see anything we think is significant enough to misstate these numbers or allow for fraud, that's what we tell you about in the letter.
Great.
And, you know, we identified that cash receding weakness in that, in that older system, but that was really it. Your, your controls are pretty good. Not that they're ever perfect, but, you know, they're pretty good. And so, we didn't identify anything we thought rose to that significant level.
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work on this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Just ditto that. Thank you for being here, and thank you for taking another look at what we're doing here. Anybody else? Okay, you're going to move us on. That was relatively brief.
And the news is good, it's.
That's right. No news is usually good news around here as well, so, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our second agenda item. This is board and commission policy. Under 2A, we have City Manager Eric Keck as president to discuss the board and commission policy.
You gonna move?
I'll move. That'll make it easier. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Subsequent to the last meeting that was conducted on this, which I believe was April 24, staff went back and made many of the changes that were asked for as part of the, the study session that emanated from that session on improvements of the policy. And specifically, if you've had the opportunity to look at it, we've run through several of the areas to, to make the, the changes. Basically, it was a lot of narrative, specifically in the sections that relate to allowing, you know, a, putting in a scope of, of what this policy is going to cover. Some of the member requirements were also addressed. I know that council spent significant time talking about whether or not a person could or should spend time on multiple boards and commissions, and that language has been more clearly stated in there. Initially, we just left that language as open as possible to allow for the council's discretion on that, and you still have discretion, but it's a little bit tighter. And we're seeing perhaps why you would want to have one person per one board or commission, because as of right now, we have over 20 applicants for this next cycle. So, there's a lot of interest in serving, which is fantastic in the community. Additionally, under the limitations of service, again, we, we went through again and analyzed each of the boards and commissions and ensured that the, the ability to, you know, serve the number of terms was all, all similar for those boards. And then, we also put additional time in there, as you probably have seen, for the application period. We've tightened that up linguistically as well as date-wise, so that we do not run into a situation, as we had experienced this last time, where the council was actually reviewing, well, the, the packet, or the deadline for submittal of a board and commission ended after the council packet went out, and we had two more applicants that came in. We won't have this, that situation occur, transpire again with changes that have been made. We have some new reappointment procedure language in here, which, of course, we just had that study session two weeks ago to discuss who would be eligible for reappointment. And then, also, what we're trying to do, and it's always very difficult, council, to prognosticate how many folks are going to apply, how many evenings interviews would take, but again, we tried to put some language in here that talks about, you know, no more than, you know, so many applicants, 15 applicants in a night at 10 minutes an interview. We think for a qualitative review, 10 minutes is, is short but adequate to, for you to gain a good sense and feel for a, an applicant's ability to serve on the board, and so, that's been taken care of as well. We also, through the help of Allison McKenney Brown, she put language in there that talks about the role of an alternate member and what an alternate really does, and an alternate to the regular. So, that language is new within this particular policy from the last time that you saw it, as well as some language that talks about a vacancy that might occur prior to the end of a term. What, what, what's the requirement going to be to move that alternate from the alternate position to the full position? So, hopefully, that's a little bit more clear. Ms. McKenney Brown also helped us with enunciating some language here for role of the council liaisons and what a council liaison is to do, and hopefully, that language is sufficient in your, in your view of this particular document. And, yeah, so finally, that, that was the last particular change that's been made. The rest of the document is very similar to what you've seen before. It's essentially just a, an aggregation of all of the descriptions of the boards and commissions, their purposes, their, if they had a bylaws or, or things that they're operating by, their ordinances, that's still included in here, and we believe that would be helpful to anyone who's not only serving on a board or commission, but just to the public in general, to remind them of, of the roles. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and ensure that we've incorporated those changes that you've enunciated in the past, and if not, obviously, we're here to take note of that and try to improve that so that we can bring forth a policy that you can adopt by, I believe by resolution. Is that correct?
[inaudible].
Yeah, so, we'll, once you feel like you've got a final enough document, we'll bring forward that for your approval.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Russell.
I have a couple of questions. On, under, on page two, under limitation of service, I, I asked for some of this language to be changed before, and when I, when I looked at this again, and the very first sentence, "In an effort to encourage opportunity for all citizens to serve the community, the council may refrain from appointing," can we put "shall refrain from appointing any one individual to multiple boards or commissions?" And then, I took out the sentence, "From time to time, this may prove to be difficult, and citizens may be appointed to multiple boards predicated upon a particular skillset they may have." And I just took that out altogether. The next statement says, "Council has the authority to waive this rule." I, I don't think we need that sentence in there.
Okay, so, let me, let me get this straight. So, the sentence that says, you know, you want the sentence that says, "Council has the authority to waive this rule," out as well?
No, no, that can, that, that could stay in.
I think those issues are somewhat linked. Perhaps we can have a council discussion on that language amendment?
Okay, and that's fine with me, but I'm just, and then, Inglewood Housing Authority is not on here? Is it a quasi-judicial board?
It's not quasi-judicial, I don't believe.
Not a true city board.
It's not really mandated committee, is it?
Sharing a mic here with, you mind passing the mic? Thank you.
Inglewood Housing Authority was created by act of the city, and the city does have some limited authority continuing over Inglewood Housing Authority per state statute. So, you can list Inglewood Housing Authority if the council wants to. The relationship between council and the housing authority, of course, is different from the regular, the, the regular committees, but it should be noted that council does appoint the membership to the Inglewood Housing Authority. So, a lot of these rules for appointment may very well be applicable to the Inglewood Housing Authority. Again, that's one of those discretionary things that you as a body decide what works for you.
Okay.
You know, I think traditionally, though, it's not been considered one of the quasi-judicial boards that limited, you know, representation on that and limited them from applying for others, I think historically, for whatever that's worth. Anything else, Councilmember Russell?
I have a few others, but do we want to take these one at a time?
I'm listing them. If you want to laundry, list them out, we'll, I'll, I'll pick them up one at a time after we get through questions.
Okay, then, on the role of an alternate member, it says, "Two alternate members shall be appointed to each board and commission unless otherwise stated within the enabling ordinance." Is that, is that accurate? I mean, I thought most of them, some of the boards we have now, we have self-appointed a second liaison.
I think this is an attempt to clarify what the council's intent is, but I do think that there would be some additional work through the city attorney's office to make those language of the authorizing language, be it charter language, be it ordinance language, to match whatever this policy is moving forward. Does that seem correct? I'm seeing some heads nod, so, I believe that's correct.
Once you've adopted this policy, you've already authorized me to go back and look at chapter two of the city code, which is the enabling ordinances for most, but not all, of the boards and commissions. Those boards and commissions that are, are set forth within charter, that have language that just can't be changed, well, we'll, we'll live with that. But most of these, most of these boards and commissions, if this is the standard you want, we can, and we can go back and make those changes to the ordinance so that when I bring that back to you for your review this summer, you'll see that standardization. And, and when we were talking about that chapter two has no real standardization between the different boards and commissions, this was one of the elements that we're talking about, that we know exactly how many alternate members will be there, and how many liaison members, and, and how they post their minutes, and all of those kind of standardization of rules.
Okay, and will the, actually, then, the next thing that I have, where it says, "Alternate members are encouraged to attend all meetings," that's still under there. Then, when you go to alternate to regular, it says, "The recording secretary will submit the alternate's attendance record." I mean, encourage, alternates are encouraged to attend all meetings? Encourage doesn't, doesn't carry any weight with, I mean, as much weight, because that attendance record is going to be used to evaluate whether they get promoted, right?
Required, seems.
Right, and so, I think we need to reflect that somehow, even in their role, so that they understand that. Okay, then, the next thing, under the role of liaisons, it talks in there about not, council liaisons do not vote, but the charter requires certain liaisons to be voting members, like the water and sewer board. And I also believe the Malle Center Trust Fund Board, the main council member is to be a voting member. So, I think we would need to make sure that that is clarified.
Can we append that language to say that liaisons are not permitted to vote unless required by the enabling ordinance for the board or commission?
We absolutely have to, if the charter requires it, the charter requires it. And again, this is the, the language that I, that proposed on the alternates and the liaisons, that, that's just a starting place. If it's not what the council wants, of course, you can, you should amend it. And then, what I'll do is I'll take that back and match it up to the charter and chapter two, and the places that we can make the whole thing standardized, we will. We can't standardize charter, as you know.
Right, and then, one more question, Mr. Keck. And I didn't go back to check this with the previous one, but under the specific boards and commissions?
Yes.
Was the, was the Inglewood municipal code added under each one of these, or was that there the last time?
I believe that's been added subsequent to the first time that you've seen this. That's added since the 24th of April meeting.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I didn't think that the purpose of writing out the policy was to try and restate the charter over and over again. That's not, I don't think that's what we were trying to do, was just say what the charter says and then match it up. The policy was supposed to, discussion I thought was supposed to be whether we're having more than one member, somebody serving on more than one board. This, this regurgitating the charter over in a second spot isn't necessary. We already know what the charter says. The charter says a liaison isn't a voting member in some places. It specifically calls out where people are voting members. We don't need it in a second document to just confuse things in a policy that holds no real weight and the council can change it any time anyway. I thought we were supposed to be discussing the role of the liaison, like, do they give a report to council? What are they, what is their participation as far as what we consider participation in a board? Do they think that they're supposed to go to a board and give a state-of-the-city address to that board, what they think is going on with council, and speak on behalf of council? Or are they just supposed to be there and then report back to council on what's going on with that board, because we're not getting?
Added that issue to the list. We'll get to that in just a moment.
We're not getting those reports back. So, I would like a lot of this piece of it, taken out of it, that's just regurgitation of the, of the charter. It's not necessary, and it's, it just muddies it up and seems to be kind of a waste of time. I'm totally against adding two alternates to every single board. That's not necessary. One of the things that we wanted to discuss last time was whether we were going to go ahead and do these interviews twice a year or once a year. If we were going to do them once a year, then the addition, consideration of making sure that each board maybe had an alternate would be worthwhile. If we're still going to stick to two times a year, then the only ones that should have alternates are the ones where we've already identified those and not add more. What that does artificially is gives a council an opportunity to load up a board, that other councils have to go ahead and take their appointments, because you've got people waiting in the wings. There could be several rounds before a new council who might look at a board and think that it needs to change direction without trying to take people out of there. I certainly agree with Councilmember Russell's opinion that having the, some of the conflict with the charter stuff, if, if we take the charter piece out and actually make this more of our policy, that we want to make sure that people are not serving more than one board, so that we open up the opportunities, that we want to look at having an alternate on certain boards. But the conflict of charter, if we're going to have all this charter language in there, then we need to go ahead and maybe table this to, to look at it more as a charter-supporting document, if that's what, what it's supposed to be. I'd like to get away from that, but if we are going to stick with that, then I would, oh, I'm sorry, I guess I'm done.
No problem. I'll go ahead and just list, I think, what I think are some issues to try to get some consensus on. One of them is, do we want people to serve on more than one board if they're not quasi-judicial?
I didn't know I was, I, I didn't know I was done.
I'm sorry, do you have a?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Thank you. And so, that's the first issue, the, is there a problem?
I think you cut it off. Yeah.
I apologize. Did you have more to go? Continue, ma'am.
It's, that's very, it's frustrating. I'll wait for my turn again, but since you decided that I'd already put enough things on the table, maybe you think it needs to be discussed.
Okay, again, the first issue, again, I think, is whether or not we'll have more than one person, you know, Councilmember Russell suggested some shall language there, obviously not binding for future councils. Why don't we take that issue first and foremost, because I do agree with Councilmember Berentine. That was a lot of discussion of that, and obviously, this policy language does not quite get us there. Mayor Protem Gillett?
I would support keeping the bay in there. There are some, sometimes you have a person who's serving on a board who are, are perfect to help serve on another, and I don't think we need to have a rule that limits them to only one board. I, I am not comfortable with that. We have very smart people in our city, and we also have very people who have, have served well, and shouldn't be punished because they're, you know, if they want to serve on one more board, that they can't because the council thinks they have too much power or something. They're good, and, and they're the best candidate for that, and I think that's the key. They have to be the best candidate for that other position as well, not just because of who they are, or who, what they've done, or whatever, but if they're the best candidate, I, I would rather us be able to consider them.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine? I do have you down for, I think, advocating for the shall language, along with Councilmember Russell. Did you have something to add to this specific issue?
The issue came up because we've got somebody who's serving on four boards who wants to serve on a fifth board. We needed to make a decision prior to the opening of the next round of interviews on whether one person is going to serve on that many boards, and we were going to come up with an, an idea of what the number is. So, if somebody is serving on two boards, and then council decides that that person's absolutely the most perfect, the only fit for one other board, then I guess we can keep changing it. We have all of these people applying for these boards, and we either need to make a decision that we keep reaching out and getting more people to mentor and put into these boards and make a list, or we keep cherry picking certain people that keep changing our policy. So, I would like it.
And so, do you feel like this process is not leading us to where, to get that consensus? To get?
No, I, I, I would have liked on this document, especially for that section of it, for it to have enumerated what in the world got changed since last time, because I didn't really notice anything was any different than the language that was from before. And all of the suggestions that got made and notes that were, were taken before, nothing got changed. It's exactly the same wording, so, if we're just going to keep bringing this document back and not making any changes, it's still the same issue as it was when we did it before.
I think what I'm hearing from staff is that they want clear consensus on this issue, and that's what I'm trying to get right now. Can we, anybody else weigh on this so we can get to that consensus? Councilmember Olson?
Well, now that you ask.
Thank you.
I was trying to let people play out, and a lot of things that they mentioned are things that I noticed. I, I would prefer "may." I don't want to bind a council in the future to not choosing certain qualified folks at different times. I don't believe we've cherry picked anyone in particular. I know that there's someone in particular that keeps being brought up over and over as serving on so many boards, and we took care of that last time by not putting that person on another board. I think future councils will probably do the same thing. I do think we need a little bit of wiggle room. I also am really concerned about the application, but we're not getting to that yet, but I would like to talk about that at some point. So, if you're making a list there, I'm not sure what process you're using here.
Yeah, basically, what I'd like.
So, do you want us just to launder, or do you want us to give you our reasoning?
If you'd like to add some to launder, yes, please do, and then I'll take them one by one.
So, I think that's it. I also don't think that we need two alternates per committee. I think that would be, and I, I mean, we certainly don't need two council liaisons anywhere either unless it's called for under the charter. I really appreciate the work that you all did on this, because one of the things that it helped me with is to draw out what, what's being said about each commission and board, and some of the issues that, I think it made it clearer, and there is going to be some cleanup, I think, that Councilmember Russell noted, those things, when you go back to the charter, you're going to see, well, we're actually, you know, they really do have to vote on water and sewer and the Malle Center, and, well, EMRF, and, oh, we don't have anybody on that, but, but anyway, yeah, those are, are mine. I'm not sure, talk more about them, but.
Thank you. Others want to weigh in on the issue of more than one board.
Could I, could I ask then if we change that?
Fine, let's go to some council members who haven't weighed in, so we can get consensus, and then we can move on to the next issue. Councilmember Martinez?
I'm in favor of leaving the "may" language, only because, like Councilmember Olson mentioned, that I don't want to bind us or future councils from, from, from making a change to that if they want to. So, I think we should leave that as is. I think, in some cases, it might be okay if, more than, if a, a person is serving on maybe two, but I don't think that we should change it to "shall." I think that would be too much.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates?
"May."
Thank you. We do have consensus on "may." You know, there is a particular issue with a particular folks that we, we've had, we feel comfortable those folks continuing to serve out their remaining terms. You know, some applicants have asked if they give up some of those, will we consider them for others? And so, that's probably the second half of this question. Councilmember Berentine, perhaps I can turn to you? Maybe that's where you were going, some of those comments?
As far as the issue about binding any other council, right in there, it says that the council can change this at any time.
Yes, ma'am, we've already chosen the "may" language. I don't want to go too deep into that language issue, but please.
Is there anything I can say that you could let me finish?
If you'd like to stay on point, I apologize. I'm just trying to redirect the conversation and make it as productive as possible. I don't mean to interrupt. Please continue.
As to the language of that and binding other councils, the sentence in there is that the, the city council is not bound by this, that we can change this, that we're not bound by this policy. So, I'm not really sure what difference it makes, whether it's "shall" or "may," since we don't have to, to. or may, since we don't have to agree to it. So, if we're going to go ahead and change that, why don't we take out that the council can't -- then I would like to take out that the council has to be held to it.
I believe that's the same issue that we've just gotten consensus on. I'm not interested in taking this council around in a circle on that language issue.
No, it's a different -- it's a different issue. It's a different sentence in there that says that this council, no council, is bound by this at all. So, if we're going to go ahead and change that, can we take that piece out? I don't think it's the same issue at all.
Fair enough. Do people support removal of that sentence?
Where is that sentence now?
Is that the sentence, "Council has the authority to waive this rule"?
Yes. Which is going to be the legal standing regardless of whether that sentence is in there. And so, whether it's there or not, I think is, you know, should probably be removed to the lower half of our list here. But if folks want to weigh in, since Councilmember Barantin would like to get some consensus on this issue. Councilmember Yates?
I'd say go ahead and leave it in, for the biggest reason. In the future, councils, not everybody may be a lawyer. And sometimes, we need to have documents that allow council to read it and understand it, instead of saying, "Mr. or Mrs. or city attorney, let's get our whatever." Instead of always having to ask the city attorney, you know, let's make it kind of clear, you know, this is something that you're not bound to.
Thank you. Others want to weigh in on that. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I'm not an attorney either, but I know that council has the last authority, so that doesn't have to be in there. I'm okay with removing that. And then, were we also talking about somebody being on two boards? Was that the question that you threw out?
That was the shao versus the may language. And then, I was trying to follow that question up of how are we going to deal with folks who are currently in that position, which is what I was trying to get to. But Councilmember Barantin suggested perhaps we should deal with the removal or non-removal of this issue. And I'm trying to get consensus on that before I go back to the second half of my question on whether or not more than one person can be on a board of commission, and what we should do about that current situation.
All right. I would actually just like to remove both sentences if we're going to leave may in there. So, that's fine.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gillett?
Thank you. I'd like to leave them in there, because this document isn't just for us, it's for the public as well. Sometimes, it's nice that the public, who doesn't know every little nuance and rule and way to find things, you know. I do know that I've had a member recently look through our stuff and try to get information on how the board commissions, what the rules are. So, it'd be nice just to leave it in there. That way, the public is also clear that council can change that.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson or Councilmember Martinez?
I think redundancy in some forms is great, especially for having disagreements on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez, are you in the same boat there?
I'm proud of leaving it in.
Thank you. I think we have consensus on that issue. I'm going to suggest, now that we move on to where I was trying to take the conversation again, which was, we've suggested that council should have discretion with this may language on whether or not to appoint more than one or a person to more than one commission. And I'm just simply asking the question, what should we do about the folks who are currently -- my thought is, who are currently in that situation? Should they be allowed to term out? Are they allowed to do some sort of swapping to be considered for new board and commission appointments? Does anybody have any strong opinions on that? The policy currently is silent on that issue, I believe. So, I don't know if people have some strong feelings on that or not. Councilmember Olson? Councilmember Russell, excuse me.
I would just like to say, there's probably not that many left that are on that many boards. If we are going to appoint people to more than one board, if that ends up happening, it is still very clear in here that under no circumstances will anybody serve on a quasi-judicial board and any other board. So, if there is someone that is on four boards and wants to serve on the water sewer board, which is quasi-judicial, my opinion is, they need to step down from all four of the other boards, because that's quasi-judicial. If -- and anytime, if they already serve on another board, they would have to choose between that and the quasi-judicial board. But I think as they term out, and one of them terms out and they come up for reappointment, they're available for reappointment, even if they're available and they're already on two or three boards, that they need to either waive that one or choose which other one they want to drop.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson? Come back to you. Councilmember Barantin -- Councilmember Gillett, I believe it was.
Let's talk about the person who serves on multiple boards and which boards he serves -- let's talk about one of them. Let's talk about one of them. He serves on boards nobody else wants to serve on. Those are boards that we've -- I've been, Lynn and I, we've been doing this eight, Joe, you're going on 10. Those are some we never get applications for that he's on. So, you know, if you have one person willing to serve on multiple boards that nobody else wants -- that's my issue with this whole thing. Why penalize us and penalize him? Just let him serve and let him, you know, or her, whoever it is in the future, be able to serve. And they're doing a great job. If they're not doing a great job, that chairperson will let us know, and it'll be done. And I have no passion or desire at all to remove somebody who's currently serving in good standing from any board they're presently on. They can -- once they term out, we can re-decide. But I wouldn't want to pull anybody off right now.
Thank you. Mayor Protem? Thank you. Councilmember Barantin?
We have never had a shortage of people that want to serve on the water and sewer board. We have never had a shortage of people that want to serve on the parks and rock board. We haven't had a shortage of people that want to serve on the urban renewal authority. So, I would have to -- we had several people that...
Here with the floor here, if you don't mind. Thank you.
It's simply not true. And we have had -- we had almost half of the people that applied, that 15 people that we couldn't place last time. We have already more people than we have positions for this time. And if you do it by term, are you talking about that somebody gets to serve the three terms for the six years on the water and sewer board before they're termed out? That's -- they can't -- we can't -- you can't have a citizen initiative that clearly states, and I think that we got a copy of it in here, because people were frustrated by what was going on, that each member of a board or commission had the opportunity to serve. This whole thing for the citizen initiative to do boards and commission term limits was to stop what was just monopolizing of certain people serving on boards. And that's still what we're doing by allowing people to serve on multiple boards when we have had more than enough people, could have replaced every one of those four boards if that person wanted to be put on the water and sewer board, but they didn't want to go ahead and give up the other boards. We have asked other people to go ahead and give up a position on another board, and they have done that. To ask certain people to do that and not ask other people to do that and try and reskirt this whole process to satisfy that desire is unfair to all of the other people that are applying for these. None of the boards, I think, that that particular example serve on have been boards that have -- were not applied for in the last two rounds that I've been participating in. So, if we're going to go ahead and try and even see about this kind of workaround on this to go, let's let them serve out their terms, no. They give up their board, and you open it up for other people who can then let more people in this community start participating, which is what that citizen initiative was intended to do. And this workaround to try and skirt this, to go ahead and make sure that certain people can continue to serve on multiple boards when you've got more than enough people to serve is ridiculous. And if you do decide to do the terms, then you could be possibly talking about allowing somebody to serve another 12, 18 years on a board before you would go ahead and do that while they're serving on multiple boards. So inappropriate, especially for something like the water and sewer board. The urban renewal authority, which is five-year terms, which goes past a council, including the Inwood Housing Authority, which does have a higher authority than the other boards, and some arms-length distance from the council in their decisions. We don't get to go back on those. So, if the intent of that citizen initiative was to go ahead and allow more people the opportunity to serve this community, then what we're doing is trying to do a workaround to that, and I object to it.
Thank you. I think what I'm hearing there is that Councilmember Barantin is advocating not letting those folks term out and actually reappointing those positions for people who are in the situation of more than one. Obviously, that would be an extra sort of step in our application processes. We'd have to advertise for those vacancies. So, I do think that's why we want to try to get some consensus on this. Councilmember Yates? And right now, I've got Mayor Protem Gillett and Councilmember Olson as wanting to let them term out rather than reappoint.
I would be in favor of letting them term out. The one board that Councilman Gillett had to say was talking about is a non-emergency retirement board.
Right.
People just do not want to be on that. I got to admit, when I go to that thing...
It's complex.
It's complex, and it takes -- it takes a good two years to even start to get up to speed on that. And this gentleman wants to work on that board, and this person does have additional talents and knowledge of the city, which not everyone seems to have. You know, I'm just not interested in penalizing someone for having a lot of talents. The other part of this is the comment that the citizens initiative had the intention of making sure that that didn't happen. Well, it wasn't part of the wording. If it was, then we wouldn't have that conversation right now. You know, so the intention, I don't know where that's coming from. It's not how it reads, and that's what we have to work with. So, there you go.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Martinez?
I would be in favor of letting the folks finish out their current term, but maybe not adding any new terms. So, if they're in their first term, they don't get to do three, they can finish that current one that they're on and then decide if they want to apply for it again and give up the rest, or just stay with their one term.
Thank you. And just for clarity, I think that's what I was asking about, was letting them term out of their current term.
Current term, yeah.
And then, of course, council would have to make another discretion about whether to reappoint that person or look at new applicants at that time. But certainly, this policy leaves us enough wiggle room to do that.
My only hesitation with that would be is if we're putting -- if a quorum is at risk for some -- in some cases, like if no one wants to serve on a particular board, if we don't reapply, are they going to be able to still do what they need to do?
Well, if we wait until the end of the term, hopefully, they'll either reapply or members from the public will reapply. So, we'll have someone to fill that hole, is what I'm thinking. That's why waiting to the end of the term does have, I think, some wisdom in that regard. Does that make sense? Go ahead, Councilmember Olson.
Well, I'm not sure if this is what you meant, but it could be possible if we say, okay, you can't serve past that term, and then no one applies and no one's willing to do it. But we have someone who is willing to do it. That's a place I don't want councils to get into where they can't -- they can't appoint to the pension board because nobody wants to serve. We've had people turn us down after we thought they'd take it, you know, and they said, no, I don't -- I really don't want to do that. I don't believe that the citizen initiative's intent was to necessarily limit the number of boards and commissions it was to limit the time. And I think the council was in full agreement at the time that, yeah, I think we need it to rotate in a way that makes sense. And I think that's what this policy does. It gives council a lot of leeway to make sure that they're spreading it out and make choices like, no, you're on enough. You don't need to, you know, we've got enough people applying. There were a couple of times where we didn't have enough people applying. Most of the time, we've had enough. We've always been able to fill. But in some cases, we haven't. You never know what the future tenor might be. So, I think keep options open.
That's right. It does seem to be on an uptick, though, for whatever that's worth. You know, I do think we've got consensus on the more than one board issue. I think we've got consensus on, you know, how to deal with folks who are in that situation currently. I'm going to move us on to another issue, which I think is the more than one council liaison. Does council want to see more than one liaison per body or not?
It's nice to have a backup.
Nice to have a backup. I got somebody with a "nice to have a backup." Councilmember Yates?
I would concur.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I don't think a backup is necessary. When I've not been able to come, I just ask other council members, can you cover for me? And that seems to work okay. I don't know that a backup is totally necessary.
That we need a designated person, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Could add some additional flexibility by allowing anybody to fill in. Councilmember Russell?
I agree with Councilmember Martinez, because if somebody is not able to come, I think that we could call each other, and I think that would be a good thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantin?
On some of them, where it's already a bit dicey on having a liaison at all, like the urban renewal authority, I think we need to have the city attorney go back and look, because when you have more than one council person sitting at the table, when it's specific by state statute, and it could create a situation where people have a problem voting on an issue like that. So, while there's a few boards like that, I think I would agree with Councilmember Martinez. Having done this for a while, I think that it gives undue influence to a board to have that kind of show of counsel there, especially when you're supposed to be a liaison, not a participating member, you're not a voting person. I think it creates a desire on the part of the board to try to get from council where they want that board to go, rather than them representing as they were appointed to do. So, I would agree with Councilmember Martinez. I think we ought to try to limit that kind of interference.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I have never seen a situation where people seem to be interfering. But if it has been, then that'd be a great reason to do this. I do -- I just lost my train of thought with the response you gave.
One liaison or two.
Yeah. Oh, I know what it was. What I don't want with an alternative to a liaison to another is where both think the other one's going and the other one does, and then they don't show up either. And it's really, having been on a number of boards, it's hard if it's not consistent, the same council member more often than another, you know, like in, out, in, out. I think all the boards appreciate that there's a council member there. They're always wonderful and receive people very well. But I just wouldn't want -- wanted to think, oh, I thought you were going. Oh, I thought you were going. And in that way, it is helpful to say to someone, I'll be your backup, you know, like, I've never said that to Amy about the cultural arts, but I really enjoyed going to her place last week. It was really great.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I'd like to give an example. Rita and I serve as liaisons to the code enforcement board. Rita, you would have to admit, when you first went on that board, you had no clue of the history of what had gone on. Sometimes, it's nice to have your other council person who's been there for years to not only help the other council, the new council person that's come on to that board, and maybe help them understand where we've been. Sometimes, like the code enforcement board, where you have a gaggle of brand-new people who don't understand where we've been and what we've looked for. And I know Doug serves on that board as well. And sometimes, we just have to re -- there needs to be some continuity of things you've done in the past to where you're at now and how you're going to move forward. One of the things I've always appreciated, I served on that board with Bob. He was on it before me, and then I went on with him, and he kind of let me know what they had done in the past. And I was hoping to have that same with Rita and then me back out more. But sometimes, it's on some of the boards where we're doing things, there needs to be some history of where we've been and what's going on. It's nice to have that information. And I'm more than willing to let Rita take that board and be in control and make sure that she's the liaison to council all she wants, if that's the way she wants to do it, because I have no desire for control of anything. But sometimes, it's good to have different people on other boards just to be there to say, here's what we've done and here's why we did it. And like when code enforcement came to council some years before, you know, what were the issues? So, I'm in favor of having two this way, one main person and one person that knows what's going on to be the backup. If I called Amy and say, hey, would you take -- you wouldn't know where we've been or what's going on. Sometimes, I would hope that, like Steve and I on Inwood Housing Authority, we both know what's going on, but we're both rarely ever there together. So, Steve's either there or I'm there, and then we keep that continuity with them. So, that's kind of how I was hoping and envisioning it would happen, because if I called in Lorette to say, hey, would you help me with, you know, Ms. Russell can't be there, come in, I'm not going to be there, she wouldn't have a clue where we've been and what that is. So, I just, I don't have an issue with it. I like to do things that don't waste my time, so I would rather not have two of us there. If Rita's going to be there, I've got 100 other things I can be doing. If Rita's gonna be there, I've got 100 other things I can be doing. So if we want to have it as one, just make sure that your backup knows what's going on. If you're gonna have somebody as a backup, that...
Thank you. I've got you down for one in the backup scenario. But, you know, I will... Mayor Pro Tem brings up an interesting point in that there are certain ones that have two liaisons. There are certain that have one...
Could you tell us which ones they are again?
Unfortunately, I was hoping to get a laundry list. Do we have it? Okay, there.
Yeah, actually, it's in your packet.
Thank you.
So in the instance where you have two, Code Enforcement Advisory is one, two at the Malle Center Trust Fund...
Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer, Urban Renewal.
You have no liaisons. We have no liaisons to Water and Sewer.
Yeah, I don't know if that's accurate on Urban Renewal.
Urban Renewal, you have you, mayor, and then Steve Yates is listed as an alternate member.
And then Budget Advisory.
I guess... Hold on just a second, just to clarify. I think the question is, what does the authoritative legal language of the originating document say?
That's a different story.
Not, "What are we doing?" Because I think, you know, we're somewhat aware of that, but, you know, where it's a charter, what does the charter say? Where it's an ordinance, what does the ordinance say? And that's what I was kinda hoping to say.
Yeah, the only one, then, that that's the case is Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer has no liaison.
Two liaisons.
No, no. You have multiple elected officials.
You have members.
Members.
No liaisons. You have voting members.
The only one that says liaison is directly is your Budget Advisory Committee.
So unfortunately, I don't think we have the answer to that question super handy as far as, you know, the answer to that question. So if we could provide some level of clarity, I think staff could come back and say, "Hey, if you like this structure of, you know, let's make sure non- quasi-judicial bodies have one liaison and a backup." We could look at all the different points where that language is and try to bring those back. Councilmember, I apologize, I don't know where we're at. I think it was Barantine, is that right?
Rec and Rest assured that I will know what's going on in Code Enforcement because it's taped, and I can listen to the tape. So if you ever have to miss, I can fill in for you. The only board that doesn't have a regular audio that's been provided for the public is the Inwood Housing Authority. And so, and we're trying to deal with that issue and getting the information out, both for the public and for us. This all ties into the... What is the role of the liaison that's there? I mean, Councilmember Gillett said, you know, "I'm not there to control anything." But then, you don't know what's going on, and/or, you know, Rita didn't know what was going on, so she needed to have somebody. But she could... I mean, you read the minutes, you catch up, you do something. But she's not supposed to be guiding that board anyway. So to know all the history... Well, Code Enforcement is a bad example, because y'all didn't meet for like a year or something, so there's not a lot of history to go through when you don't meet. But part of the concern has been, and why the conversation has to be with the role of the liaison, is because when we were talking about the Budget Advisory Committee, I was... I said I'd be more than happy to serve, and I can understand why the rest of council probably doesn't want me to serve on there, because I have been very outspoken about wanting to close that board down. So the concern and the reason Code Enforcement ended up with a second person was because when I was on council before, I wanted to be on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, and apparently, other councilpeople didn't feel comfortable enough that I was going to have influence or have an opinion. And this body has also expressed that same concern about having certain councilmembers on certain boards... Yes? About having certain councilmembers as liaisons. So if we want to talk about the role of the liaison and what they're supposed to do, how they're supposed to participate, how much they're supposed to have influence, then I think we should address that issue and then report them back. But I think that when you... I think it still gives too much undue influence, the more councilpeople that you have on a board like that, when they're supposed to be working amongst themselves instead of putting their finger up trying to figure out what council wants them to do, they're supposed to be advising, going through things so that they can advise us on what they think we ought to be doing.
Did you like the language that was provided, the draft or discussion of the "role of liaisons" paragraph?
No.
Okay.
I don't think it addressed the original issue that was brought up at the previous meeting about, are we supposed to be giving our role and responsibility to each other on council? If we go and we give a state-of-the-city address to a board or commission that we're on, and I have listened to some of those tapes, and I wholly disagree with the information that's being given on where this council is going, what's going on, and it had nothing to do with the issues that that board was dealing with. It was just like, "I'm gonna go ahead and tell you what council thinks and what we're doing and how the city is doing," and it's more of a state-of-the-city address instead of anything to do with that board or commission. So I think we need to come to some understanding on what we believe our role is as a liaison and how we're supposed to be presenting that.
Is there any particular language you dislike or language that you would suggest to add to the role of the liaison that could help clarify?
Aside from the wording that's already in the charter, which is mostly what this is, I have no conflict with what's written here because it's charter. And I think that, I have already expressed earlier, was unnecessary to regurgitate the charter in our policy.
Do you have an opinion at this time on the number of liaisons? Or would you like to come back to that issue after we have a more robust discussion about the role of the liaison?
Again, I will say that I think too many, that having additional councilmembers puts an undue burden on that board and stops them from being able to function as a board. I think that we should limit it.
Do you like one plus a backup?
No.
Do you like just one with no backup?
I agreed with Councilmember Martinez several times and said, "No, I think if we need to have somebody back it up, we can always do that." I tried to reassure Councilmember Gillett that I would go ahead and listen to as many tapes as possible, and I think any of us can have had enough experience to fill in for any board as a liaison.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I do have my note there. So, you know, I do have Councilmember Martinez, Russell, and Barantine as supportive of one with no named backup. I've got Mayor Pro Tem Gillett, as well as Councilmember Yates, who would like to see a designated alternate liaison. Do others want to weigh in on that specific issue and perhaps identify other issues? Councilmember Russell?
I know I've already given you my feeling, but I think that it does tie back to what the role of the liaison is. I think if we get that defined, we wouldn't have these other issues. Because I guess my understanding before I ever came on council that a liaison was if the board had questions, the liaison could answer those, but also that it ought to be our responsibility, when we've had our board meeting, is to give a report to the council during councilmember's choice, whether it's during study session or in there, about what's going on with the board. Then that way, that would take care of the history piece because we were all giving reports every time there was a meeting. And I know that I've not been real good at that, but I think part of defining what our role is and what our responsibilities are perhaps would help.
I think I'm hearing a suggestion that might add some language that would consider, you know, at least some sort of reporting or at least some sort of, you know, discussion of a duty of the liaison to report to the body, and perhaps we can weigh in on that issue. But again, right now, I'm trying to get to the two versus one kind of issue. Councilmember Olson?
I think I would prefer to see what is... What's been the practice for each one of them, as you said earlier, mayor, and then what each one... I think each one's a little different, and I hate to throw another curveball in there, but I could see why there would be two on Code Enforcement, why that could be helpful. I mean, there's a reason why there's more than two on Water and Sewer. Are there three on Water and Sewer?
Yeah, three, mayor and two members.
It's actually in the policy. I just went through and quickly looked at it. You know, you're required to have two members on the Code Enforcement Advisory.
It's always been two. We've always had two.
One for E...
No, that changed in 2004.
Hang on just a second. Let's stick with Councilmember Olson and the city manager for a moment. I'll come back to you in just a second, sorry.
One for EHA, Fire Pension has the mayor, Malle Center Trust has one person, Non-Emergency Retirement Plan has one, Police Pension is one, ERA can have one, and Water and Sewer has the mayor and two councilmembers.
So I do think...
Put this in writing as well.
That's helpful, thank you.
Right, and then we have, and I know they're not liaisons... Their liaisons are not voting, but the budget, we just decided, would have two for a reason that would be different than why maybe Inwood Housing would only have one. And I think, I mean, I would not want to put two on Keep Inwood Beautiful, but having someone to back you up is really helpful. And I don't mind if we have someone who says, "Yeah, I'll be your backup for that." That's... I mean, honest, some of us are on a lot of boards because some didn't take any or heart very many. So if you have time to listen to every board and commission tape, please, I'd be glad to let people take some...
Cast the baton.
Yeah, but I enjoy what I'm doing. I think it's one of the most enjoyable parts of my job as a councilmember. I have called a number of you, CML things, I've called when I couldn't make their voting stuff. So I think we... There's this level of trust we have to give each other with to say, you know, "We trust that you're gonna go do this." And I think it's a great idea to talk about what... How do you liaison well? How do you give updates on what's going on in the city? I think many of the boards I'm on want an update. What are some decisions that have come up that they just want to know about? It's one way for us to communicate out in another form, other than the citizen or our magazine, of what's going on. Nothing should be a surprise to anybody, though we shouldn't. So I think it's worth having the conversation about liaison's role when we're there and that we all agree that, yeah, that's a great way to go at it. And we probably have different best practices that some of us use that could be useful for each other to know. So I'd be... I'd welcome that conversation later. I know that's not a decision tonight, but...
Thank you. You know, for those that are advocating, I think the, you know, perhaps reporting, you know, just to give the staff some direction on that, you think quarterly, you know, how often should we suggest that perhaps in this language, do you think?
One of the problems with it was that we were doing it probably for the last four or five years under Mayor Penn, but sometimes it went on forever, and people felt like they had to say a lot. And it's like, no, just give us the... And some things, we get every week through the form of decisions we're making in there, so that's what we would update on, would be, you know, what some things coming forward to us to decide on. So I think limiting our time and deciding what's important to tell and...
And perhaps, you know, the more I think about that, perhaps just saying that there is a report, you know, maybe gets us to a point of having that discussion and feeling out what's appropriate, rather than trying to memorialize something that we need to kind of paint ourselves into a corner on. Councilmember Yates? Again, the two versus one, I know where I've got you. Maybe you can read as well on the reporting.
Yeah, well, I would like to kind of talk a little bit about how these boards function. These boards are like a council. There's multiple members on that board. And sitting in all of these various board meetings, one thing I've noticed is that these folks take their responsibilities seriously. And just simply because I may say something or another council may say... Another councilperson may say something does not make them change their minds. They're professionals. So I kind of find the argument that just simply because we have an elected official sitting there is kind of a frivolous argument. We need to give these guys credit for what they do. They're good, so...
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Martinez?
As far as reporting, I haven't been doing a very good job of this, but I think if we just say regular reporting and don't have to really formalize it any more than that. And I was gonna say, as far as guidance, council guidance, some boards really want more guidance than others. And I think when they do their reports to council, that's our opportunity as a group to say, you know, "We want you to go more this route or that route," not during the individual meetings unless they have a particular question or something they're struggling with, and, you know, we can bring it back and talk as a council. But I think the council guidance really comes during their annual presentations.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I generally agree. I like, you know, adding some reporting language that's not very specific about the dates. I think that I see some wisdom in that. I do see, you know, my general preference for liaisons, I think, is one with a named backup, that the council is aware of who that person is, so that person can kind of stay in the loop. So in my mind, if Martinez, Russell, and Barantine haven't totally reversed field on that, my suggestion would be that with that consensus, we ask staff to see if there's any real hot-button issues on that, you know? Review the language that says why there's two in Code Enforcement and make sure, you know, bring that back to us before we actually change that, just so that the council could consider that one more time of, as Councilmember Olson, I think, noted, you know, are there sensitive areas there that we need to be a little bit more aware of in this discussion? Are we comfortable with that currently?
I am.
Okay. Nobody's... Oh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I want to talk about the role, so I'm done with the number.
Okay. Yeah, it's a good segue. Go ahead.
You know, I think the roles of councilmembers on different boards are different. There have been times where council said, "The liaison need to go to their meeting and say, 'This is what we're looking for.'" You know, "We're looking for them to give us some direction." We've done that to ACE, we've done that to Code. We may have done it to a couple others, I just can't remember, but...
Water and Sewer, even.
Yeah, Water and Sewer as well. You know, council needs so to say that we can't go tell them what to do. That's not really what we're doing. We're saying, "As that liaison, we are the liaison from council to the board and the board to council." It's, we're allowed to have back-and-forth discussion. What we don't do is say, "This is what council demands that you do." You know, none of us are doing that. But that's how I feel that it's... And I guess I have a question of why the person who wants the reporting of boards doesn't want to be on any board. So if there's gonna be reporting on boards, which is, we're fine. We used to do it once a month, you know? Then let's all carry the load together. Don't just say, "Well, I'm not gonna serve on any boards," and then, "But I'm gonna demand you do everything on your board," or criticize what others are doing on their boards, you know, without being involved themselves. So I would just appreciate that we work through this together, that we understand that this is a council unit thing that we're asking to be done, and that if we do this as a team, not as one person pitting against another, so...
Now, hearing a couple suggestions regarding that role of council liaison, and I'm gonna suggest that perhaps some language be added that just simply states that the liaison has no unilateral authority without council authority, and that the main role is a communication conduit, reporting relevant activities of both bodies to each other. Does that sound, you know, relatively general language that perhaps could give them some guidance and then another crack at the role of the liaisons? Again, that was no unilateral authority.
Thank you.
And secondarily, their main role is as a communication conduit, reporting relevant activity to both bodies.
Yeah, that's good.
Sounds fair.
It's a decent starting point, perhaps, for us to have additional conversation. Councilmember Russell?
I would just like to address a situation. This is what is very frustrating for me, when one councilmember throws another councilmember under the bus, when there was direction in this council not to appoint certain councilmembers to liaisons, and now to sit back and blame it on that person that is entirely wrong. And they want to... It frustrates me that things have been going so well, and then somebody gets thrown under the bus, and it's the same person all the time. And I would like an apology to that person.
So she's addressing me, let's address this. Yeah, because...
I got thrown under the bus earlier, too, so...
Our first night as council, when we assigned boards, Ms. Barantine told this group she didn't want to be on any board.
She had been told that nobody wanted her on a board either.
Wasn't told by me or anybody else I know here. Nor that same thing with the board for... I just lost my train of... The one we just assigned, the Budget Committee. Budget Committee. I didn't say she couldn't be on. Did anybody here say she couldn't be on? So, let's not make stuff up or have facts that aren't true. Let's deal with real situations, not what we think somebody might have said. What I do know what was said, is Ms. Barantine said, "She didn't want to be on any board." "You didn't want to be on any board either, but we encouraged you to come on some, and you did a great job." So, don't-
Counsel, while I understand this is an emotional issue, I-
So, don't, no one's throwing anybody under the bus, but let's get that clear. One, the person who doesn't want to serve on boards shouldn't be the one demanding. All the rest do it perfectly and get to sit back and criticize. That's all I'm saying.
All right. Hang on just a second here. Let's just recognize who has the floor here, and just, you know, real quick, I will throw out there that I understand this is an emotional issue, and I do think it deserves some discussion, but right now, this isn't necessarily the topic, and I know we want to look in the rear view, but I'm really focused on, you know, how do we move this policy forward here tonight in the next, you know, nineteen minutes? Well, we want a little break, so maybe a little less than that. So, I'd like to get, at least try to get through some of these issues. I'm going to turn the floor back over to Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Olson. If you'd like to weigh in, go ahead and indicate, and I'll get to you in just a moment.
I would just like to say, it was me that asked for the roles to be defined. It wasn't necessarily Councilmember Barantine pushing that, and so I believe we need to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine?
I do think it's inappropriate for a councilmember to do what Councilmember Gillett is doing. I didn't say I didn't want to be on any boards, and several councilmembers, including, several councilmembers made it quite clear that they didn't want me on the Budget Advisory Committee. I brought up both the Urban Renewal Authority and the Inglewood Housing Authority and the very serious problems that they were having, and I was told by people on this council, "Go back and listen to the tape, because you are excellent at rewriting history," and I'm getting tired of this, that they didn't want, they didn't want that contention, or somebody that was already somewhat oppositional. And I agreed. I said, "I see a lot of problems coming forward with that board. I suppose I can attend anyway." I asked to be on the Budget Advisory Committee, and it was made pretty clear, come back and listen to the tape, that since I had been very outspoken about wanting to shut them down, that it probably wasn't the best choice. And I said, "Okay, that, I, okay, I agree with that. That's fine." When the Housing Authority, under April 5th packet, made it clear that they had asked for information about why no council liaisons were showing up to their board meetings, I made it very clear, I'd be more than happy at this point to go ahead and go on the Inglewood Housing Authority. And we had that discussion sans Councilmember Gillett last time. So, the concerns about what's being, happening with the liaisons and the fact that I listened to the boards, that I'm trying to make sure to keep up to date with what's going on with them, I'd be more than happy to serve on several of them. But I brought up some very serious issues with several boards that I wanted to serve on, and I was told that probably that kind of contention wasn't what that board wanted at that time. So, let's not rewrite that. I am more than happy to go ahead and serve on either the Urban Renewal Authority, I think I, I think I'm very savvy on what's going on with them, or the Inglewood Housing Authority. I didn't have any problem with that. I don't think that that excludes me from talking about what the role of the liaison is in representing this council to a public board, and in my opinion, swing them, and misrepresenting some of the issues that are going on on a very one-sided basis. If people would like to, if we want to make sure that there's a policy about how we handle it, then maybe that'll take care of some of that issue, so that we're not grandstanding with some of these boards or politicking with them.
I do think this, hopefully this policy will get us there. I do think this is, might be a good segue to our, you know, I think probably the last item for discussion of the evening of, until we get this all figured out, do people need to do any swapping? Do we need to informally discuss things? And maybe that's an opportunity to have that exact discussion that Councilmember Barantine is mentioning.
You have to make sure that we've got all of the boards.
No ma'am, no ma'am. We're not going back to you.
We're missing some-
No ma'am, we're not going back to you. Hold on just a second. We're going to Councilmember Olson. I'll come back to you. If you'd like to speak again, just put up your indicator. I'll get back to you in just a second. Councilmember Olson?
I think we're talking about two different nights, or two different events where things might have been said, where perhaps you were, someone said that you shouldn't be on something. So, I particularly did affirm you when you said at the night in there that you would be on the Budget Advisory Committee, but you kind of laughed and said, "But I'm not sure you'd really want me on." I said, "No, I don't think we would want you on." My view of our council role is to be on these boards and commissions to help them perform well into what they were set about to do. It didn't appear at that point that that's where you would be with it because you didn't want it. I don't have any trouble with you wanting to be on it. And so, I said, "No, I don't think it's the right time for you. If you think you can do it now and be on a board when you don't agree with its existence and really help them, I'm fine." But I just say that then, like, I'm really, I'm going to help them do really well and be successful. The other event was the night you all decided, we all decided which boards and commissions we were on, right? That was the night that I think perhaps something was said where you didn't want to be on anything. I was not here that night. I gave my, I gave my first choices to the mayor and said, "But whatever you need me on, just go ahead." And when I came back and looked at who all was, where, went, "What happened here?", and then realized that some people didn't want to be on them as much, and I don't know, it surprised me. I think that's a major role of council, is to be out with our commissions and boards and figuring out.
Stop repeating it. It's not what I said.
So, that's my perspective on it. I didn't tell anybody that night you shouldn't be on anything, but I did the other night say I didn't think it was wise. Here's my deal with these boards and commissions and being liaison or alternate. Our goal has to be to help them function well and do well with the mission that we've given them. And if we all can do that, I'm fine with people being on things. But if we're going in there with any agendas to change something or disrespect the people who are serving on them, I find that, and I don't know if you would do that or not, I just think we have to all be willing to go in and support. So, that's my, that's my goal in going.
Thank you. You know, I am going to try to just ask councilmembers, you know, we do have budget advisory, which I think we'd, I'd like to get some consensus on who those folks are, so we can begin sending folks to their meetings again. And then, I guess I would like to ask councilmembers, you know, if there are bodies where they're having trouble making the meetings. Personally, you know, urban renewal has been a difficult one for me to make. Dr. Cog has expanded to two meetings a month. They now have a study session and a regular meeting, and often that conflicts. So, I've had to call Councilmember Yates. He's filled in for me a couple of times, and so, you know, having had spotty attendance in the last several months, I'd like to offer urban renewal for some other member to consider taking on. And I guess I would ask other members, and maybe we won't get there tonight, but at least we could identify which are the ones we're having problems with, and which were the ones the council needs to come to some consensus on, who that person should be moving forward. Councilmember Yates?
Okay. I would be happy to do urban renewal, since we've been, I've been in and out of it already. There is one board that I have a very, very difficult time making it to, because it's at two and three o'clock in the afternoon, and it's just, it's next to impossible, and that is non-emergency retirement board.
What day?
Oh, I don't remember off the top of my head. But, you know, a year ago, was it a year ago? Yeah, I think it was a year ago. I tried to step out of it because I'm just, I just can't make it. I get to a couple of them, but I'm not serving the way I should be serving. So, if we have other folks who have the ability to make it, I'd be more than happy to get that up.
You know, I think at this time, if you just tell me which ones you're having problems with, we can get a laundry list of those out to council, and then we'll send out to email and say, "Who's interested in these?"
Fair enough.
We'll get everybody to sign up and put their names under each one, and then we can come back together and say, "Who do we consensus want to represent or be the liaison?" Not represent, but be the liaison. I believe it's Councilmember Martinez.
I have, in the past couple of months, had a hard time getting to the library board meeting because my KEB meeting is right before that, and then it goes over, and so that was the one I would be open to.
I'll take it.
It's a fun board, but-
Apparently, it's a hot item, you know? It's been auctioned off.
Yeah, three of my appointments are on the same evening, so it's tough.
You said library is the one?
Library.
Library, okay, thank you. Councilmember Russell, I believe.
Some of these say on the side, "Tenure as councilmember." Is that dictated by charter?
I question that honestly, and maybe that just needs to be reviewed. I saw some of that language, like, you know, on one where I thought, "Oh, I don't think that's the case," where it's by tenure. I'd have to look exactly which one, but I guess I would ask staff to double-check those.
Some of that indicates, like, specifically, you're correct, and some of those, it's past practice, but in some of it, it indicates that the mayor shall serve on the particular board. We'll go back and review that again and look at that.
Only as long as you're mayor.
Correct, correct. That's correct.
Okay.
So, I think it means the same, only as long as you're on council, or as long as you're on council, but I don't think that that changes.
That's right.
That's what tenure means, yeah. That's what tenure means. Mayor Protem, where are you doing?
Inglewood Housing-
I apologize. It was on, Councilmember Russell, I got apologized. I got confused as to where I was. Councilmember Russell?
Okay, I had one other question. Actually, I believe that Councilmember Barantine has been very open about being willing to serve on some boards, and so for, I think it would be magnanimous to reach out and find out what board she would like to be on, instead of everybody jumping on all these boards, and she's left out again.
Fair statement. Did you, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, here's one, Mayor, Ms. Barantine, can I? I cannot do Inglewood Housing Authority at four o'clock in the afternoon. It is impossible for me to get there every time. Sometimes I plan on, and then sometimes you get there, and then they go into an executive session, so you've wasted your time going, and it just, so if somebody would like to take that, or Ms. Barantine would like to take that, there are wonderful people there who are very kind and friendly, and it's a free meal. So, that's got to entice somebody. But I am having a very difficult time, because it's at four, that means I have to stop what I'm doing at three, which is, it's just sometimes impossible.
You, Councilmember Olson?
I did that for four years. It's hard, very hard to do. And so, I think at the last meeting on the Budget Advisory, I said, "I'll be the backup if no one else wants to do," but I really cannot, because it is on Tuesdays, right? And the timing, I have a conflict that I can't do that on Tuesdays.
Okay. So, we'll add budget advisory to this list. So, I've got five total: budget advisory, urban renewal, non-emergency retirement, library, and Inglewood Housing. Anybody want to add another to that? Councilmember Barantine?
We don't have the South Platte group on the list. There are a number of groups that aren't boards and commissions that we're on, and that's where I think tenures- Some of them were, and some of them were not put on here. So, if we could get a complete list.
Maybe we need some help identifying what all those are.
But not all of the committees that are, that exist are on that list.
Yeah, and again, I think, you know, part of this act of, you know, memorializing this policy is going to be the act of cleaning some of this up and reviewing exactly where we're at. Again, I was hopeful that we would have some of this language to be able to get there tonight, but, you know, right now, I think at least we say which ones we're having problems with, list those, and then we can at least make sure folks are getting there.
As we're trying to make a decision, I'm trying to get all of the boards and commissions and the role of council and how they're interacting with all of these, I would like to make sure that we have a completed list of the other committees, and who's serving and what's going on with that, so that we know the full list of the participation of council, because I do think it plays into the boards and commissions and the amount of time people are serving and other things that they're doing. Thanks.
I agree. Thank you. You know, if anybody has, sorry, real quick on that, if anybody has anything, if you know of one that's missing that might be overlooked by staff, please do include that in the email, and we can make sure that those are listed. If anybody knows of one they'd like to shout out or whatever that wasn't included, make sure, yeah, go ahead, I mean, if there's one-
So, there were at one point an assigned tri-cities.
It's on the-
It's on the other, oh, it's on that one?
It's on the second document, the-
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, the discussion one.
You and I are on there.
The discussion one.
That's the one Councilmember Barantine, and you're the-
Yeah, and then, and I have not been able to go on the last two because of work stuff. The other-
So, should we add that one to the list?
Yeah.
Tri-city?
Yeah.
Yep, so that's six now.
And then, is the hospital one on here?
Swedish Castle?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the, if you scroll down, it's on this other.
Thank you.
And the South Platte Working Group is not on there.
South Platte, thank you.
Is that?
It's been me. Oh, no, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's been me. I mean, it just more recently was. Usually, that's been by, I don't know how that worked, by, you have to go through a training thing with them.
So, let's make sure and add that to the list then, for future, you know, council consideration or discussion. Mayor Protem?